Welcome to the meeting for the Agenda Preparations July session, especially to the firemen. I appreciate you all coming out and I appreciate your service. I don't get a chance to say thanks to many of you, but I do appreciate what you do. The fact is, you volunteer your time to put your life on the line so people's property can be protected, and I appreciate it. John should invite you to more meetings, because hopefully, you're always welcome, and certainly my office door is always welcome as well, for you to come and take a visit. Counsel, I have before you an agenda memo. It's just one page. It is perhaps for the agenda prep tonight. Mike, it looks like this. It's just one page. At the July meeting, July 10th, we will be recognizing one of Latrobe's businesses for national and statewide achievements to pay, achieve the next described in paragraph 1 of the Latrobe Kinder School over the coming year. There's two items, unless our solicitor has more, and I don't think, Joe, you had any, that we have for action at the July meeting. The first item is the authority for me and the city to enter into an agreement with the Cohen Law Group for a cable franchise. As you know, our cable franchise agreement expires in February. I want to begin to negotiate with Comcast. I do an updated agreement. I want to seek professional assistance and counsel, so we can get the most out of that agreement. I believe, over the last agreement, we left money on the table, and I think we can do better. So much better, I think we can recoup the cost it would take for the agreement, and then some. So there's a lot of opportunities. As many of you know, cable companies have done pretty well over the years, and Verizon has no initial commitment to invest in fires. So Comcast is going to be pretty much the only game in town for some years to come here, and we've got to make sure we have a good agreement. The second item for consideration is a police service agreement with St. Vincent College. As you know, we've been discussing for some time, an agreement with the college. Basically, we have an agreement that we, at least I agree to, and the city or the college agrees to. I'll give Solicitor Kelly a moment to describe his concerns, but in general, we have an agreement. What we'll need to do is, after the city council says, yes, we want to go in this direction, the college does likewise, then we go to both supervisors and the state police to get their blessing, if you will, to enter an intergovernmental agreement with Unity Township, and then the state police to get their authority to police in their jurisdiction. The main concern that Solicitor Kelly wants to bring to the council's attention is one of liability, and simply, the idea of if officers while on duty are hurt, that's anything since there's more than just the potential as it relates to workers' comp, which they have now. In fact, one of our officers was injured last night assisting the state police in the Bagley area. We often get called out of the city to provide police coverage. That's what we signed on to when we agreed to be a local police force. And last night, one of our officers was injured, and we'll have a small amount of time off. Of course, that creates liability, and what Solicitor's concerned with is who bears the brunt of that liability? The college obviously feels that if we put the brunt on them, it's an open-ended agreement that could cost lots of dollars, and the liability related to overtime and staff salaries. So the way the agreement reads now is we bear the responsibility like we do for last night. I can't go to Unity Township, and I can't go to the state police and ask them to compensate me for overtime, for the officers who have to cover the shift of the injured officer. You understand? So in the same way, that's the way the agreement is now. If theoretically something happens at St. Vincent, that one of our officers is hurt, and we would incur overtime costs for that time, in addition to other costs that we might experience, the burden is as it is now on the city. Again, Jim, if you want to share your concerns with that approach...
I think Mr. Graziani fairly well expressed it. You'll find in the fact that I gave you in the very last page, was a provision that would have been inserted, or at least would have been discussed with the school district, and when at that time, we were looking to possibly provide police services to them. Obviously, that agreement never materialized. It's not that there is a great probability of injury. I don't think that that is there, but I just want to counsel, if, to go into it with our eyes open, saying, okay, if we take the approach of St. Vincent College, we understand that we may have overtime, and that may have to be our burden. If you want to put that burden on the recipient of the service, then that language on that last page would have to be inserted into the agreement. I take no position either way. I just wanted to show the council understands the potential that might be there. That's it.
Thank you, Jim. The last two items are related to discussion items and to the folks we have here to join us tonight. The first is related to the opportunity we have with the redevelopment assistance capital program in the state. As you realize, in 2010, or recall in 2010, Senator Kim Ward was able to get inserted into state legislation, $1.7 million for the parking system improvements of the city of Latrobe. That was approved in a piece of legislation in October 2010. That piece of legislation, of course, got approved, but the money doesn't get released until the governor says, "Go ahead." In February, the governor executed a letter to the city, saying that we would be eligible to receive $1 million for parking system upgrades. And as you know, by that time, and as of today, we've spent all the money necessary to improve the parking system within the city of Latrobe. However, with the letter was an obligation of the city to apply for the money. We are making that application. It's a matter of time before the state approves the expenditures, and then cuts a check to the city in the amount of $1 million. As I've already said, the money has already been expended. So what the state will be doing is approving expenditures. You know, is approving that we appropriately spent the money, and if they find out it'd be appropriate, they'll cut us a check for $1 million. At that time, the city has a decision to make. What isn't to be decided is reducing the parking authority's obligation as it relates to what they spend. In other words, that's not on the table. The $1 million will go to parking system improvements. You have two choices, at least three choices, to do that. And two of them will be explained, for the most part, by Mike tonight. Choice number one would be take the $1 million, sit it in the vacant calendar in interest. Choice number two would involve the combination of that with a attempt to pay down bonds in an earlier timeframe, and Mike will explain that a lot better than I could. Choice number three would be through an intergovernmental agreement with the parking authority, relieve the parking authority of $1 million of debt as it relates to paying back the bond. So their annual payment for the next 20 or so years will decrease appropriately to cover the $1 million. Then take the $1 million, put it into a city capital fund, so that for the next five years, it would be used to leverage grants, hopefully monies to do everything from like replace the HDA system in this building, to whether it's buying equipment or other building improvements, as the city deems as normal capital expenditures. The difference between capital and general fund is the capital expenditure is something that you expect to last maybe 10 or longer years, and isn't a reoccurring expenditure. That's a capital. And what I would propose is that latter option. But that option of putting aside and doing careful planning, leveraging the $1 million for potentially two, three, or more million dollars worth of funds, be they foundation or grant monies, you know, that's my suggestion, is going to require lots of planning and consideration. But before we get to that point, you need to understand from our bond counsel, Mike and Mr. Lynch were involved in preparing the bond issuance, of what it would be like if we tried to prepay, and what would it be like if we just, again, let it sit and then pay as early as we can. Mike, you have the floor, please.
Thank you. It's good to see everybody this evening. Mike McKay with Janie Capital Markets. Spent a lot of time with Alex on this question, and some of you might recall that this question came up when you borrowed the money back in 2012. And I'll be honest with you, it comes up, and then it never comes up again. But here we are, and actually, it actually did come up because of, you know, some good fortune. So as Alex has mentioned, you do have some options to consider. The one thing, though, the one fact that I want to start out with is, you probably recall, the 2012 bond issue had a five-year optional redemption provision. So in other words, the bonds are not callable until 2017. In 2017, they're callable without any penalty, but the buyers of the bonds needed to have that protection to buy the bonds in the first place, and that's the minimum that the market would take, is a five-year call protection. So no matter what you do, those bonds are going to be out there until 2017, and then at that point, something can happen. The two options that Alex has asked me to talk about are to take the funds that are coming in, and basically pledge them in differing formalities to paying down the bonds. And we can do that, and you know, there's a little bit of a cost to it. And basically, the cost is twofold, one of which is the bonds are callable for three and a half more years, so you have to take that in consideration. The other is, despite what's happened with treasuries and the fixed income of the market in the last two weeks, interest rates on investments are still really very low, and they're going to be below the borrowing yield. So if you were, for example, the first option would be formally set up an escrow, put this $1 million net of some expenses to set up the account, do all the legal work, into an account, buy treasury securities, and set it up so that there's cash that comes to make payments. We could actually set it up where you would reduce the payments on the bonds by about $60,000 a year, per year through the life of the issue, and that goes out to 2034. So that's basically what a million dollars buys you. What you'd be investing, though, is in treasury securities that are, you know, about a half a percent at best. And even though the bonds were borrowed at very good interest rates, you're still in the threes. So you can see the difference right out the back, that you're going to have a, you know, there's a difference in differential in your earning versus your borrowing. So there's a difference right there. The other option, called the second option, is basically the same thing, except it doesn't formalize it to a degree where this has to happen. So in other words, you put the money into an account, and then you draw it out as you need it, or each year, as you need it. Now maybe investment rates go up in the future, you're going to earn a little bit more, but what that does, or the main difference there is, a future council could change its mind and use that money for whatever it wanted to use it for. So the first one is a pledge, no questions asked, it's done. The second one is kind of loosely putting this money aside, and maybe draws its life. The last thing that I did was do kind of a present value analysis to try to see, you know, what that $60,000 per year kind of equates to. And it basically comes out to about $1,068,000. So in other words, there's about a $68,000 benefit at today's interest rates of putting it into option one, I'll call, into a formal escrow, buying these securities, and paying it off, which, you know, a million dollars isn't a tremendous amount when you compare it to the other. So, you know, those are options that you have, and those are the pluses and minuses, and so I'm here to answer any questions, I guess, that any of you may have.
Mike, are we limited to the type of investments that can be made on this $1 million?
Yeah, I think...
And what are we limited to?
Certainly in option number one, where there's a formal escrow, you would want to limit yourself because you bring in, because these are tax-exempt bonds, you bring in the Internal Revenue Service, so you'd want to keep things very, very clean. And secondly, you're bound, I think, by the codes of the state for investment purposes, which aren't that much more flexible anyway. So you pretty much are bound by treasuries, and if you buy something a little bit different, it wouldn't be that much of a difference in yields. In other words, you can't go out and buy stocks. You're definitely not allowed to do that.
And the payoff, when you set up an escrow, that pays down, it reduces our payments by $60,000 a year, the one option that you've discussed. The net reduction in the total amount of the bond reduction is $68,000. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, $1,068,000.
The net reduction in the total loan is $68,000?
No, it's a million sixty.
A million sixty, yeah. Sixty eight in addition to... About beyond, a million, of course. So we would be netting a gain of $68,000 on $1 million investment, so to speak. And that's over the life of this loan.
How do these options, options one and two, guarantee that we're paying off the debt for the parking garage? How will we assign that $1 million to take, to reduce the parking garage debt? How does that pay it? I mean, this sounds like we're putting like somewhere we're not paying it on the parking garage debt.
Well, the city took a general obligation bond. The bond debt is the city's, and the taxpayers, the general fund, are on the hook for that bond. It was about $3.7 or $3.8 million. Our annual payment is about $285,000, but that fluctuates different years. It's not like a mortgage where I know what it is because of the scheduled payments that we agree to. Let's just say $285,000 is the obligation. What he's suggesting, again, is through the escrow account, that payment, if you will, that Barb writes out of the general fund account, having taken transfers from the parking authority into the general fund account, writing one check, would be in essence, you know, $285 minus the 60, to be about $225.
And that's the 60 that the $1 million is going to make on its investment for that year?
Well, and principal, if you will. As the ex will be down to zero if the end of its life. So the $1 million plus any earnings equates to $60,000 a year.
This $1 million would stay in escrow for the length of the current bond issue?
Until they call back.
No.
Well, it'll...
$2,000, so.
It'll go to, yeah, it'll go to 2017. Then we'll call bonds, so that your payments are reduced by $60,000 all the way out.
Right. We can't do any reduction until 2017.
Right.
So the $60,000 will take effect, the payment until 2017?
Well, it could. No, it would begin next year, if that's how you chose to do it, because you could put cash in the escrow for 2014, 15, and 16.
Equivalent to 60 a year.
That would offset, that would offset the payment. So it's, it is $60,000 for every year through the life of the bond issue.
But yet, Mike, the net gain is only $68,000 over the life of this loan. That's it. I just want to make, you know, it's hard to grasp.
I think the big difference is with the two options. The first option makes a binding commitment. It's going to happen no advantage but...
Leaves it open-ended?
Leaves it open-ended, yeah.
For example, correct me if I'm wrong, come 2000, I mean, even next year, we could, we owe $285,000, and we get a check from the state for $1 million, we could write a check for $285,000 out of that $1 million. So, for example, so we could make a million dollars worth of payments in the first, you know, it takes about three plus years to do that.
And I think the question you have to ask yourself is, are those two options versus the third option that Alex kind of laid out, can you use that money to kind of put into a capital reserve? That would be kind of, I think, in the middle, where you would have it not pledged to the debt service, but you could put some strings on it to, you know, so that you are putting it toward capital improvements for future, for the future, so you wouldn't...
Yeah, so future council wouldn't use it for... The balance, but, you know.
So option three, as you mentioned it here, has no guarantee that it's going to reduce parking debt?
It would, through an agreement. Right now, for example, we say to the parking authority, "You're on the hook for $235,000 from now on till the end of the terms of the, you know, the bond." And we would say, "Now you're on the hook for $175,000 from now till the end of the bond," so thinking $60,000 dropping into it. So one way or the other, the $1 million is going to reduce the parking system's obligation to the debt. Either direct through the formal escrow, and indirect through the, an account with a pledge, or just saying, "We, as the taxpayers, assume a million dollars in debt. You no longer assume that $1 million in debt, and we'll take that $1 million ourselves, have it in our, you know, capital budget." With, again, I wouldn't want to do it without a real solid capital budget plan. And that's part of the reason why Delta, in their studies, is important, is what would we spend it on? Well, we all could probably think of a number of capital needs in this city, and $1 million isn't a lot. But it could leverage, whether that Penn.820, or 910 funding, or DCNR funding, or foundation funding, you know, much more. So that the $1 million buys us $3 million or $2 million with earning power. Now, that's my goal. That would take a lot of work by this council and others to think about how that actually would play itself out, and in discipline, moving forward to stick to the plan, whether it's through a formal or informal agreements.
And the way you're talking about leveraging is to have matching, say a matching grant comes up for something, we don't have the money to match it, so we wouldn't be eligible for the grant. But if we had this money in reserves, we would have this money to show...
That would be the goal.
Something to match. $500,000.
It's not atypical for a local government to borrow money for capital improvements. And that's in essence what we would be doing. You have to really see it as separate. The parking authority, one way or the other, is going to get the $1 million. It's just, how's it get to them? Does it get to them through these means, or does it get to them by the city saying, "We'll take the million, you're off the hook for the equivalent, and we're going to do this in the future"? What's not on the table, what is not at all being discussed or even suggested to you, is anything related to our general fund and just, you know...
Using it for operations and all that stuff.
Yeah.
Right.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. It's good to see everybody this evening. Mike will be available, not tonight necessarily, but after tonight, for questions as we continue to discuss this. I don't know when we'll get the check from the state. It could be January 2014. So it's a lot of time to continue to discuss, and really have our act together before I'm asking you through an agenda or through a regular meeting to make a decision. The next item for discussion tonight is the Delta Development Report. As you have been received of, I believe, at the May, Debbie is that we got the last with us? May, regular meeting, council got a chance to see, I think, step one, two, and three. Since then, they've been given drafts of four, I think, and then the ones related to fire police. So tonight we have a presentation, it's about 30 slides long. You have a police and fire audit, and then...
That's just the presentation.
As council recalls, when I was hired in 2011, one of the things I insisted on was the city looking at a third-party review of our finances, and coming up with a growth and management plan to properly budget us later in the future. Through the process of a grant, we were able to secure from the DCD, thank you, Mike, for being here this evening, we were able to, basically, I think we got a 70, or 60, 40, or 65, or 70 split, where the state is paying for about 60% of the grant, or the contract total, and we're on the hook for the rest of that. I thought, correct. And for about $80,000 or so, we hired the Delta Development Group, they started their work last year, and made their presentation in May. Of course, we have an audience here tonight, a little bit more than we have in May. And again, for those who came in late, thank you. I appreciate that. Fire is one element of tonight's report. In fact, out of the 34 slides, it's about two slides, and not to steal anyone's thunder. If I was able to cut the fire budget in half, I could save the city about 2%. So it's quite frankly, not a lot. But what is a lot, is the fact that the volunteer firemen in this city save us about $1 million a year. I'd get that. I know how to do math. If I cut your budget in half, all it can save is 2%. So it's really not a lot of interest. I can save a lot more money through the police overtime than I can through that. But what the report is suggesting, and I'll stand by the report's findings, is that your ability in the future to get volunteers and to support the level of activities will always be harder and harder, and that our ability in the future will be different, because we'll have less people to serve. In 1960, we had 12,000 people. 19, 2010, we had 8,300. It's likely the next census will take us lower to 8,000. And I don't need to tell you the times are changing related to training. Some of you started the fire company, you might not have had as many hours to do training. It's harder and harder to get volunteers, that's why I commend you. The fact is, you guys put in a couple hundred hours of training, a couple hundred hours of fundraising, even before you get to the scene, you've done that many hours. How hard is it to get your neighbor to do that same kind of commitment, when he's working down in Jeanette, and in Pittsburgh, and in Monroeville, and Lakeview? It's hard. It's not like it used to be, where you had the mill, and everybody worked at the mill, and they walked home with lunch or after work to get things. So, you know, again, the big takeaways is, if I was able to save any money, 5% to 10% out of the fire budget, I don't get much. I experienced savings today, and that is about $1 million. If I had to have to pay fire in this town, it would cost me about $1.2 million, easily. You guys don't hurt that expensive. You're the best deal in town. Mike's heard me say that, I think, a number of times, and I'll stand by that. I will stand by the consultant's report, is you, as well as the city, have to continue to have our eye out in the future. As Mr. Paul likes to remind me, we're going broke. And that's just not us. We're all in this together. If the city goes, so does everybody. We'll probably be able to afford less police into the future. We'll probably be able to afford less public works into the future. That's our challenge. We hired Delta to think about the revenue side of the equation, enhance revenues, diversify revenues, solidify future growth in revenues, and then we asked Delta to take a look at the expenditure side of equations. It's no different than your household. You can't spend more than you make. You can't. You can do it for a year on credit cards, or two, but there'll be a day when they'll come home and rips. The other element to the report that I believe has been controversial related to the fire specifically, is just, quite frankly, one of communication. And I don't see that as a really big deal. It's just, that's overcomeable. Our fire consultants are very qualified and experienced firemen, volunteer like you have been many years in OPEC. He has a high regard for safety, and it's all about safety. I think you guys all agree, you all need to be well-equipped, well-trained, and you need to be able to trust the guy going in with you, because you're about protecting people and property, but you can't do that if you're in danger yourself. And your fire chief is probably the most vocal about safety of any guy I've met so far, as it relates to the fire in this town. So I just wanted to get that all out, because I know you guys are, you know, obviously, I welcome you to be here every council meeting. You're welcome to come. My door's open, and I hope you come and find me in those ways as well. But the bulk of the report, quite frankly, tonight, is about 30 slides explaining to us all the quirks in sanitation. Michelle West is with us. Sue Trout to talk about some of the management issues and finances specifically. You can mention our fire consultant, welcome.
Hopefully, two of my consultants are on their way, sucking traffic, because my sole consultant, John Daly, confirmed that he would be here, and Dave Sabosley, who worked on public works of technology. So I'm hoping they will get here soon, but if not, we'll go through their report and make sure that they follow up with whoever they need to follow up.
And I understand the next steps after tonight are, this is a draft, these are consultant recommendations. Council can take them or leave them, right Randy? Sometimes council gets stuff presented to them, and they don't always go for it. And we'll work on the draft through an order of process by which we make and suggest changes, and a final report will be issued, and then that final report will be accepted, or if you will, rejected by council. Regardless, I know for me, as a manager, I'm going to use as much as I can to help me understand and prepare the 2014 budget and budgets going forward. This kind of analysis, quite frankly, is done rarely by communities in our circumstance. Most communities go through the early intervention plan when they're on kind of death's doorstep and ready to be admitted into life support. But we're a community that our finances, our funding streams, our pensions are a little more stable than others who have taken these kinds of studies. And in fact, Mike, I think we're one of the few, if only, cities that said, "We want this study," before we were even asking about Act 47, or any sort of things like the recent papers relates to Claireton, Jeanette, Farrell, Johnstown, and I could go on and on. Other cities who are, including Pittsburgh, that have declared Act 47. So what we were trying to do was be very proactive. Debbie comes to us as the lead consultant for Delta with 25, almost 30, short years' experience. Dave, please have a seat. Hey Debbie, why don't you just get started in this slide now? You have a couple extra printout slides. Council has been giving slides.
Okay, and I think I gave you semester books. I don't have enough for everyone. But typically, what we do, there's more than here.
Unfortunately, it'll be up on the screen. And we're going to get these online, Debbie?
Yes, I was going to say, typically, we'll put them all online, and anybody that wants to, anything. Do I have to do something here to get it?
I will turn that on. Go ahead, hit the one button.
Now, do I, do you guys want me to present to you?
Well, I think primarily, your audience is the council, because that's who you've been asked to address tonight. been asked to address tonight.
Okay. I just don't want to, I guess I'll stand aside.
There's something on you, thirty seconds or you're gonna break.
While this is firing up, Alex did a good job of introducing us. I'm Debbie Grass, and we've done development, we met about a month ago, or six weeks ago. My team with me tonight, all highly qualified in their areas of expertise. I have Bill Gahn, who's, who's our fire consultant, Sue Trout, who worked on financial management, Michelle Nestor, who worked on sanitation and solid waste, and I think you guys saw a lot of Michelle over the last few months, trying to work through the complexities of solid waste and, and that whole environment, it's crazy. Dave Sabosley, tonight, he's been working on public works, on community and economic planning, on building cuts and zoning, and he's also my technology person, so he speaks a different language than I speak when it comes to technology. As Alex said, we've been working on this for a while. We had a couple bumps along the way, got, you know, pushed back a little bit, partly our fault. We are happy to be here tonight, Dave, to finish this up. The goal tonight is to go through the departments, as Alex said, and kind of give you the highlights of the report. I know you haven't seen it all yet, but we wanted to cover at least the highlights of each of the departments and the recommendations that are coming out of it. We want to give you plenty of time to read the reports. The final two pieces of it, which are much smaller pieces, I know we've been bombarding it with a lot of paper and a lot of information, the final two pieces are what we call step five and step six, which I want to talk about at the end of this, because what they go to is prioritizing and implementation, because there's no point in doing these studies if you don't implement some of the findings. And you've done that even along the way, and I congratulate you for that. But what we want to talk to you about is, we, we're going to tell you what we see as the top priorities, just from an outsider's view, but we can't know everything that's going on here, absolutely positively. You're the experts on that. So when we get to the end of this, what we want to work through with you is what we see as our priorities, get some feedback from you about what you see as our priorities, and then deliver the final implementation piece that will kind of lead the way towards how do we get this stuff implemented? And that's when you'll probably go back and work with Mike Foreman again about how do we get to this implementation process. So, I'm going to speak probably as little as necessary tonight to get you here, but I did want to sort of summarize where we are right now, right now. As we said, the city council solicited proposals under the Commonwealth Early Intervention Program, and the study is partially funded by D C E D. We were here the last time, and the, the report is done in six steps. We were here the last time to talk about the first three steps, which were financial condition assessment, we did some trend analysis, and we talked about some short-term things that could be done. Sue actually had a quite a laundry list of things that she went over with the council that were in your report. We're not going to do that tonight. You've seen that, you've heard that, we want to get to the department reviews. The final three steps are the management department reviews, which we're going to go over tonight, and as I said, talking about a multi-year plan to get this stuff implemented, to basically prioritize these items, because there's seventy or eighty recommendations. You can't do seventy things, you can do probably three or four if you're lucky. And so we want to help prioritize those things and get you to an implementation. We talked about this last time, just the standards that we use for doing these. We use best practice models and benchmarking some national standards. And we kind of use a strategic management approach in the sense that we look at what's the end goal and try to get to that end goal by working along the ways to implement things. In steps one, two, and three, quick summary, the factors that are causing stress for the tribes, fiscal stability, escalating costs, we're talking about things that you know very well, health insurance, energy, pensions, personnel, those costs keep going up, your revenue doesn't go up as quickly as your expenses do. The deficits, we projected up to half a million dollars by year twenty sixteen. Now, having said that, that's without any revenue that is not predictable and not certain based on your current revenue strength. What we did take out was some of the transfer station revenues, because there's been a couple of windfalls, we talked about that last time, you pointed out to me, Alex, I think, when we get to that slide, that we did project an actual deficit in two thousand twelve. Luckily, your transfer station revenue was up again that year, except that really dealt with the deficits, so you did not experience a deficit that year. But if absent those revenues that are one-time revenues and non-recurring, we projected deficits that could be as high as five hundred thousand by twenty sixteen. So basically, the regular operating revenues do not support the expenditures. This is partly due to assessed values of property in Westmoreland County. Your assessments don't keep up with the market values, so you have assessed values that are actually declining from sixty-eight point nine million to sixty-six million in two thousand twelve. Not sure what they were for twenty thirteen, if we got a bump up or.
They were slightly, but the bottom line is, if we have the same mileage, we're collecting less taxes, just from the mileage rate.
And that's, yeah, right, in the past five or six years, you're actually losing money if you don't raise taxes. So, and for that reason, there were a couple of tax increases from two thousand nine to two thousand eleven, and right now, you're at twenty-one point five mils. As I talked about, the transfer station revenue is uncertain and inconsistent, and we also, all of us, and this is all across the nation and across the Commonwealth, an economy that's still recovering. It is recovering, but nonetheless, we're still trying to recover from two thousand and eighteen. So incomes aren't where they were, revenues are not where they were. This is just, these are audited numbers. We took the audited total revenue, the audited total expenses, and ran them through. You have been experiencing in Luttrell some deficits. Luckily, you had cash reserves that addressed those deficits, and in fact, in two thousand eleven, you had quite a windfall that would have easily addressed the two thousand and twelve deficit, but in fact, in two thousand twelve, you had another windfall, so you are really in a cash positive position. But what this shows is, even though you're in a cash positive position, your revenues or your expenses are still outpacing your revenues. So if you don't have those revenues coming in, you'll see deficits.
Debbie, for, for the council's sake, I provide for council projections, and right now, we're about a quarter of a million dollar difference between our expenditures and revenue to the bad.
To the good, to the bad.
To the bad this year. Ninety, we were, to the good, ninety-eight thousand last year. After one quarter, two quarters plus, or one quarter plus, I'm projecting about two-hundred seventy-five thousand dollar difference between revenues and expenditures, year-end being two thousand thirteen December.
Yeah, I mean, and that's what we see in a lot of communities, that they're able to address the deficits. And like I said, I like to look at the audited total revenue, audited total expenses, and see what the gap is. Because if you have reserves, or if you borrow even, you can address those gaps, but if they don't stay addressed, as long as that gap is there, it continues to be there. I, I work with, it's a distressed community, but they've had a million-dollar gap as long as I can remember between, and every year, they find some way to address that drop, that gap, and it's always amazed me, because I keep predicting they're going to run out of money. But they either refinance funds, or they sell off an asset, or have some extraordinary revenue that seems to address it. But the gap, just keep remembering that that gap is still there. It doesn't matter if you address it with cash reserves, the gap's still there.
So to be clear, this slide represents two thousand twelve and thirteen, our projections in a sense.
Those were.
Where the audited numbers were the two thousand six or two thousand eleven, and despite raising taxes twice during that.
In nine and eleven.
And increasing the transfer station garbage fees, at least once, right Joe? You did that, and well, Joe?
Yes.
At least once we, we increased those, and I'm sure we increased another fee here imperative throughout that period. The trajectory remains the same, which is structural deficits in the future without intervention.
That's correct. This just shows it in a little bit different way. It shows that the red, which is the deficit, ultimately, or the expenditures ultimately outpace the revenue, given enough time because of that gap. So, and again, this is an unusual, but same resorts to using operating reserves, transfers, borrowing, other one-time revenue strategies. Here, it's primarily transfer station revenue. Other places, it's timber revenue or some other revenue that is not predictable, not constant. You never know when it's going to go away. You know, I worry about the Marcellus revenue, I don't know what you're getting here, but...
Twenty-three thousand last year, and probably about nineteen this year.
And it's so uncertain, because it could go away, you know, prices could drop, it goes red, so it's very, very unpredictable when you rely on an inconsistent, unpredictable revenue.
It's fair to say, though, if we didn't have the storm in the transfer station business, this would be a lot different conversation.
Oh, yeah. You would be out of cash, definitely. There's no way, you'd be facing layoffs and operating loans and all kinds of things. So we had some recommendations, and like I said, Sue did a really good job about revenue increasing collections. We talked about possibly going to economy collecting for all city collections, they seem to be doing a good job. Might be worth a while to investigate whether they can do all the city's collections. We talked a little bit about increasing the E I T as an option and eliminating the kind of O P T, which isn't really O P T, it's kind of hybrid that you were assessing. So we talked about eliminating that, using rental registration information, increasing mechanical devices, adopting a fee, annual fee resolution, things like that. One of the big things, and actually, I'll talk about this more in financial management, is improving the financial reporting. They've had, the city has an outdated financial management system that doesn't really allow you to do all the things that you would really want to do in terms of reporting and forecasting and cost analysis and production. So you would be well-served by updating that financial management system. And then, I mean, the bottom one is that we tell pretty much every community, you got to look at your rates and fees routinely, because you really want to make sure that what you're charging for your services is really covering the cost of providing those services. And it's a really hard job in local government to really sort of figure out what those expenses really are, because it's not like a for-profit system there where they naturally include every single thing that goes into that fee. It's very difficult in the public sector for them. These were the key recommendations on expenditures, although we're going to get through some with the departments tonight. But we talked about vacant positions and being very careful when you hire in terms of tracking the trending of the overtime, to look, does it make sense to continue to pay some amount of overtime and not hire? I think every position, you really have to know what the full cost is, the legacy cost, there is obviously benefit cost. When you bring on an employee, you bring on their vacation and sick leave, and all kinds of things that you may not consider. So you should really have a routine that whenever you consider any hire, you just don't replace just because there's a vacant position. Does the position make sense? Does it bring value to your organization? Does it advance what you want to do? Does it advance the goals of the organization? So, we highly recommend that you get that into like a routine. Sue actually recommended the setting up the transfer money and parking, one of the things we found, they were not in separate enterprise funds, and so it was really difficult to discern what costs were really identified with those operations. And if they were set up in separate funds, it would be a lot easier to really look and see what the costs are associated with each. We always recommend engaging in regular discussions with your bargaining units, so they have clear understanding of the fiscal constraints, and they know that you're not just saying we're out of money, that we may in fact really be out of money, so we need to establish those regular discussions. Establishing clear goals and objectives through strategic planning, and we'll talk about that actually a little bit later, because that's part of the implementation piece. We really, like I said, follow the strategic planning process, so that we identify what our clear goals are, we find a way to get there. Again, the enterprise software system, it should address not only your accounting and financial management system, but most systems nowadays also address H R functions. Some of them address land management, licenses, permits. You have a disconnect in some of your departments, and you're probably going to hear about this from some of our consultants, you have a disconnect in terms of being able to retrieve and see information on a regular basis. You know, it's nice if the manager can pull up anything anytime to see what's going on with any property, and so there's kind of a disconnect in that regard. You have some good software, Dave will talk about that, but we probably, you probably need a better, different setup. And then the discussions with adjacent communities, we're going to talk a little bit about that with the other departments. So, our main goal, as I said, with the step four, the management audit, is really to look at the structure, the staffing, if there can be operational improvements that would support a more streamlined, more effective organization structure. Remember, we want to be strong but flexible, moving forward, and it's getting tougher and tougher to meet those demands, to meet the demands of your residents, technology, governments, all those people who expect things from your standing partner and partner to do. I will echo what Alex said, this is purely advisory. You may disagree with us, all of you, that's fine. You may decide there are things here that you have no interest in implementing whatsoever. We're just giving you our best opinion based on twenty-five, thirty, sometimes more than that, years of experience in multiple communities where we've seen things that worked in different ways, so.
Yeah, to simplify, I have to look at it as a doctor's exam. You can go to the doctor, and he can tell you, you ought to cut back on the salt intake. You can take it or leave it. And the doctor's job is just to tell you what the facts are, or what your, what your opportunity is, and, you know, we're a patient.
These are what we're going to go through tonight. I'm not going to spend, quite honestly, any time at all in general government. You guys have a general charter, it's working for you, I think it works very well. You do, there's a report in there that you'll want to read, but basically, you're doing things correctly, you have your manager managing, your policymakers making policy, and so I, we really didn't have very many comments at all on the general management. I think that the charter is working for you very well. Step four, a line resulted in sixty-seven recommendations, so that's why I said we will need a discussion to determine what we think are the priorities at the end of this meeting. Financial management, in a nutshell, just two or three sentences. Your personnel are terrific, and they're doing a terrific job with the technology that they have and, you know, the training and backgrounds that they have. With a community that has a five-million-dollar budget, I would be remiss if I didn't say that I think you really need to appoint a finance officer. It could be someone from within, but it has to be someone that's totally in charge of all the financial operations, the collection of revenue, the forecasting, the, as I said, doing the analysis of when you do a hire, what does that look like, what does that cost you, what's the long-term implication of that? With a five-million-dollar budget, if you were a private sector, you would have a CFO, I guarantee you, you would have a chief finance officer or a finance director who was invested with all those responsibilities, and you have, as I said, excellent people who are very capable, but we, we'd like to see someone who's completely in charge of the budget and the forecasting and all of that stuff. Talked about the computer upgrade, I'm not going to bother about that. We talked about setting up this proprietary fund. Sue, I don't know if you want to say a word about the parking authority operation.
As I had addressed with council before, whenever I was here, there was a lot of review of parking operations, specifically at the time. Alex was telling me a lot about the parking garage woes and whatnot, what was going on. It seemed convoluted how the accounting of it was, some of it merging in with the general fund, the parking authority collecting some of the revenue. I know Alex has been pretty proactive in researching technologies to further parking revenues, possibly with that Pango system, but it just seemed like all of the parking was all over the board, and I, I thought I would be remiss if I didn't suggest that you review all of that, see if there's a better way that you could consolidate it into one operation via the city.
And communities everywhere are actually looking at their authorities, parking authorities, but others, water, sewer, those kinds of authorities to seek. Does it make sense for them to be a department and let us kind of handle that in a municipal way, or does it make sense to have it as a separate entity? And those are things that you can consider. And those are things that you can consider, but it occurred to us with how much work you guys already do and how much control you already have over that parking operation, that it might make some sense to merge that. And then, I talked about transitioning to outside vendors, so I'm going to show up-
And that's specifically to real estate collections. Currently, our tax office does that, but two years ago, we began to be a part of the county earned income tax collection where Burckheimer, the county consultant collects earned income. So, quite frankly, our tax department is doing less than it did two years ago when it had that service. And that's reflected in our agreement with the school district in the county-
Right, getting less revenue.
Where we, we used to get about $68,000 from the school district, now we're getting $18,000. Just all we're collecting for the district is their portion of the real estate as it relates to Latrobe. What you're suggesting, that last point, to be clear, is to outsource or have a Burckheimer collect the real estate as well.
Yeah, we're, we're saying that you should at least consider it. And I'll tell you, most municipalities do not have that option because there are elected tax collectors or elected treasurers and they basically are required to use that person and that office to collect. But because you are a home rule community, you don't have that restriction. And what I am hearing from many municipalities is that it really simplifies it and increases their collection when they use an outside vendor who has that particular expertise in that-
Now, to belabor the point, that was the bullet on a slide previously-
Right.
The idea of increasing collections, we, we collect about 92% of what's out there. So, basically, 8% is being left on the table as it relates to real estate. In a nutshell, there's about 8% hanging out there. If we get it to 94%, that's a nice revenue enhancement. At that point, you know, you're talking 60,000 more dollars, which we can surely use right now.
And it's always better to increase your collection, as I'm sure the council understands, than increase taxes. So, if you can increase your collection on what you've already loving, that's the best possible scenario. 92 is actually a fairly good collection rate, but you're right, you could probably get it to 94, 95 and that would be a huge, you'd realize a huge amount of additional revenue. Okay, I am going to now introduce my police consultant, John Daly, who was not here when we first started, but he can come on up, John.
Hi, thanks. First of all, I want to apologize to everybody for not being here. It was a traffic crash on Route 22 that had traffic jammed up for a long wait.
John, one, just one second before we leave the finance, Sue, I'm sorry, did you have any other comments or anything else?
Everything else that was up detail at council, you know, you've seen the last time I was here.
Okay.
Good, sorry, John. Go ahead.
All right. I'm happy to report that the Latrobe Police Department is very well managed, is running very good, it is head and shoulders above most of the police departments I've been in contact with in western Pennsylvania. Chief Boomer has done a very good job of setting up goals for the department, he had a five-year plan that most police departments, I'm afraid to say, do not have. And he's thought about methodically achieving those goals. I looked at the department, spent over 40 hours out here with the chief and other members of the police department, did inspections, et cetera, and developed about six recommendations that I think are important for your police department to include, and are up here. First of all, I believe that Latrobe has a lot to offer in terms of policing services for other communities. I think a lot of departments would be, or a lot of communities would do well to have Latrobe police officers provide policing for them. It would save them money, it would enhance Latrobe's revenue perhaps by having other communities contract with them, and I think it would be wise for Latrobe to market their police department. Looking at the shifts on the department, two of the three shifts are supervised by a sergeant. The third shift has a senior officer or an officer in charge that's in charge of supervision. I would recommend that another position sergeant be created. That way, you have close supervision on all three shifts, you're not relying on a peer-to-peer supervision. You have somebody who can be held accountable and can hold the subordinates accountable for following policy and procedures and would be expected to take appropriate action if the officers weren't in compliance with those policies and procedures. Next, record keeping. This is something that I brought up with Chief Boomer when we first met. He did not have a way of tracking the use or accumulation of overtime by the officers. He just had one amount that appeared each, each pay period, how much overtime was being paid out to the officers, and he did not know how it was, how it was being earned, whether it was sick time, court time, covering shifts because manpower was short, for vacations or whatever. So, I told him at the time that I would make it a recommendation that he break down how the overtime is being used and that way be able to analyze it. He did that well before this report came up, which is accredited to him. Facilities, one thing that was brought up by a number of the officers on a department and I witnessed it firsthand is that the police department is not very secure in terms of limiting access to people who are not authorized to be in there. People have the ability to wander from the city hall area over to the police department by coming through basement areas or coming from the fire department over. And it's not to say that they're not welcome, it's just to say that unauthorized people could come in there and it could be a safety issue, not only for the citizens but for the officers or any prisoners that may be in the facility. So, it's important that a plan be developed to secure the facility. Finally, I want to mention tonight that the Latrobe Police Department is well into the accreditation process. It was set up by the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police Association whereby they have to meet 120, I believe, accreditation standards. It shows, when they do do it, they have outside assessors come in, look at the police department, ensure that the police department is doing the things that their policy and procedures say they're doing and they have proof of compliance with that. With that, the city could enjoy a reduction in the liability insurance cost because insurance companies recognize that when police departments are accredited, they're much less likely to have officers get involved in things that would cost the insurance companies money. So, that's it very briefly. If there's any questions, we'll be happy to take them.
I should have mentioned police stop us, we're, you know, we tend to ramble on as consultants, so if you have something you want to tell us, please, without-
Well, I just think it's critical of note a couple of things. One, the hiring of Jim Boomer, him being able to have the liberty to have a five-year strategic plan was critical. But beyond that, quite frankly, back to the transfer station, in the sale of the six ward property, enabled city council to make some strategic investments. We've taken your advice, we've installed security cameras, we've tightened up security a bit, we've, everything, from furniture to new cars, to new SUV, to installing cameras in those vehicles, to installing wireless, to a new server, to new visual alert. We have been able to, again, through the income of the six ward school and then the actual revenue related to the transfer station, make some strategic investments. But I can stress this point enough, and this is for everyone in the room, Jim Boomer had a plan and was ready to spend the money. And if you learn anything about local government as it relates to the big boys, state government, the feds, from time to time stimulus money appears, a sale of a six ward school property, a windfall from a transfer station in a night storm, a hailstorm. And those who are ready with their plan will be rewarded and those who are not, have done the planning will miss the boat and then the opportunity passes. So, the lesson learned for me is, you know, Jim was hired about, almost a year before I was, about eight months or so before I was, he had the plan starting out, he was able to take advantage of it, and Joe, we scratch our heads, we, I don't know if they've ever happened this good. The police officers in this town are well equipped, they're well trained, very well led and are, and are moving successfully towards accreditation and a number of other things so that we can go to St. Vincent College and they want us to be the police covering their college. They want to pay us to do that, I certainly see the value. So, I can't, you know, that's, that's a big deal.
And actually, I think that goes to our first, we don't always recommend, even though DC would like us to, we don't always recommend about offering police services because there are a lot of departments that have so much work to do internally and to get their own act in order that they would have nothing to offer. But because you have a department, as you said, with a plan, with upgrades, with training, with accreditation, you actually have something to offer, and that's not always the case, trust me.
The challenge is we're surrounded by a sea of townships who refuse to take on the responsibility of local policing and rely on state police and why pay for the milk if you can get it for free? And then, we have one borough who we might be able to outsource with, but our, shall we say, our cost per officer could be higher than theirs.
Yes, that happens.
Alex, what percent of the budget is the police department's budget?
That's a great question. The police represent about 30%, 25%?
It was about 30% depending on if you put the transfer station in or not.
Yeah, my God, if you put the transfer station, I think like 50%.
It would be about 40, 45%.
As I mentioned about the fire, you know, fire is about 4.5%, police is over 30%. If we had to have paid fire, it would be a very similar, not more expensive budget than the police.
I'll get to that number for you while we're talking, because I have that report up there. Moving on, star of the evening, my fire consultant, Bill Gao.
Thanks, Debbie. Ladies and gentlemen, citizens of Latrobe and firefighters, good evening. I like to play for a full hospital anyway, so obviously some questions, but first let me explain briefly, when we do these studies, whether it's me doing them independently as a fire consultant or as a contractor to Delta as part of a bigger study, there's really only two things that we look at in terms of firefighting. One is what we call operations. That's really what does the fire department do? It's apparatus, equipment, response times, training, firefighter health and safety, ask in long-term investments such as stations and apparatus. And when we look at those, and when I say we, it's myself and other consultants that also work for Delta and for the state, we look at those in terms of national standards and guidelines, recommendations and best practices of other similar communities and that's what we benchmark against. And the second thing we look at, as Alex would know, is simply money. And yes, in a community such as this, most of the money that's, that's handled for firefighting comes not directly from municipal sources. However, it does all come from the public in one form or another. However you raise it, whether it's grants, whether it's a federal grant, a state grant, whether it's strip tickets, fish fries, bingos or solicitations, it's all money that's brought together for the cost of fire protection. And when we look at the cost of fire protection, we also look at three things. We look at opportunities for, is there an opportunity for a cost avoidance? Is there money we might not have to spend? Is there a savings opportunity? Or is there a control or containment opportunity? In other words, to roll all the money together and say, what's the true cost per call and providing fire protection? And look at it and say, where are we in terms of everybody else? Again, you have a unique but not unusual model in Pennsylvania. There are many communities, I've done many studies in Pennsylvania that are like this. I'm also doing one in California right now, I'm like California, Pennsylvania, the state of for a friend. And surprisingly, they have a similar combination career and volunteer organization out there as well. So, we look at all this and, and all this data comes in and starts, and starts a police studies together. The study themselves, if you look at any study I've written, they're pretty much, they're probably all on the internet, they tend to be more like than different. There's five or six things that are part of my recommendations thus far that are on almost everybody's, and that's in terms of training, certification, health and safety because those are big problems in the fire service. Everybody pretty much has the same ones. As a firefighter, I'm used to being direct, I'll be a little direct on this one. Been here 14 months now. This one's one of my disappointments to this point. When I got here first and met with the chief, I put in a request for a lot of information. Every information that I did receive on response times, on personnel, on municipal budgeting, but I also did not receive information, I also did not have any follow-ups. I've requested multiple times for meetings, for conferences, to come out and talk to everybody. I've been here for 14 months working on this, haven't had a single request for anybody to sit down and say, what's this all about? I have something to say. One of the things that I always like to put in a report at the very end is quotes, here's what other firefighters had to say, because you guys all have something to say, you all have something you're thinking right now, everybody has, you know, we're firefighters, we have an opinion on everything in the fire service. Those weren't followed up on. Was not invited to attend any training so far. Observing training is one of the things where I, I can take a look at, how's, how's the equipment match up with the people? Any department that's ever had full-time staffing, this is the first one where I've never had the opportunity to spend a shift. And I've learned more on those shifts than I've had in most other departments. And as Debbie knows, when I stay around the fire station, I don't go for it because usually I learn more there than I learn in any number of numbers I go through. And I requested, yes, it is financial data from your five separate fire companies, I didn't get anything. I didn't even get a request, a request to meet and say, why do you want these numbers? And I'll tell you, I have a fundamental belief that every dollar, that every fire, you're providing a municipal, we as firefighters, volunteers are providing a municipal service. We need to be accountable for the money we earn and where it came from and how we spend it to the people that we serve. There needs to be 100% transparency on that. So, if you're disappointed to this point, I expect if you're not disappointed, you're at least concerned because you're here, then the real question is, if you're not, if you're not happy with what we've done so far between yourselves and Alex and Delta, then where do you want to take? So, with that, and police stop me as we go through if there's any questions. And it's all, there also are about 15 recommendations, I believe there's about 20 pages of text and tables of every, every number that both the chief and Alex had given me has been represented there. We've done a few updates since the beginning.
And to underscore Bill's point, it's trapped.
Yes.
So, we can get this right now. This doesn't have to be the end of the discussion where we just say, hey, we think the consultants all wet, the hell with it. This city can't afford that decision-making. This city has to look seriously at those deficits and say, well, how can we do better? And that just isn't the fire company. I mean, that's Joe's department, that's how I operate, that's how the chief operates, Jim Boomer, that's all of us. And it's, you're losing money, not a pretty discussion.
Thank you, Alex. And as Alex said, again, I'm a consultant, I'm not an auditor, I, there's not, and I'm not a compliance officer. This is not a measurement of you, these are recommendations, but they're recommendations based on information, and as I told you, I'm disappointed that I haven't gotten all the information and discussions I'd like to have to this point.
Just real quick, just one, I would be remiss to not read your background. He's a beer consultant, he's been a firefighter for over 40 years, currently serving as assistant fire chief in Peters Township, Pennsylvania, where he's been a chief officer for 12 years, holds five firefighter professional board certifications, has completed in the Scott firefighter combat challenge. In 2002, he's accepted an appointment with President Bush as a homeland security advisor to the secretary Tom Ridge, serving in his capacity until 2005, holds a bachelor's degree from the University of Pittsburgh and a master's MBA from Duquesne. Unlike me, who's never done a day of your work, he has, so that's why I'm not writing the report, that's why we hired him to write the report, because it would be a fool to write a report about how to do your job. But when we hired Delta, we wanted to know the day our consulting team who actually did this. I didn't want a Pittsburgh, City of Pittsburgh firefighter who is a paid firefighter. I wanted a guy who went out on volunteer calls in a township and see what you guys see and deal with other local unit volunteer companies and so forth. So, I just wanted to make sure, I know Bill's not going to say that to you, but he's, he's the best of the best and he's not, he's not going to smoke that. I will, I'll promote it, but he's, he's coming to you qualified. Thank you, Bill, sorry.
Do you have two slides?
Personnel, obviously the biggest, the biggest asset, the most important thing of the firefighters, of the fire service is us. We need to have proper training. My studies will always recommend a minimum level of federal certification, whether, again, your studies here or Costa Mesa, California, or Bradford, that will always be in my studies. There will also be health and safety in all of them. I believe those should be required. Again, it's a recommendation. Your, the program you have to have a driver on 24/7 obviously should continue. As Alex said, there's not a lot of cost savings in a municipal budget and this certainly should not be a place where it's looked for. In the future, maybe you'll need an expansion of that. In all honesty, asset-wise, when I match you up with everything from 17, 20 to ISO for the square mileage and the number of people that you have, you have more fire stations and more apparatus than you need. What, what decisions you make on that are really up to you, but any city that I look at, I have to look at the exact same numbers. Every study I have, if you look at the last two that I did, one in Swissville, one in Bradford, both recommended consolidations as well. Very similar in size to the demographics of your community in terms of amount of people, square mileage covered, amount of firefighters and also call volume. I know that's tough to do. I've been fortunate, I've never had to be in a fire department where we've had to, we've had to shut a station down because there just hasn't been the people, either the manpower demanded or the need, but in your geographic area, it doesn't, as I've done my preliminary, it doesn't match up well. A weakness in your record keeping is a lot of good stuff the chief gave me, excellent data on your call volume. And again, if you read the study, there's some interesting trends in there, especially where you guys are going. You're offering, just as your police department is, Alex, you're giving a lot of help to your outside communities from your fire department. And you need to make sure that that's, that's fair across the board because you're just over, chief, what, just over 50% for the last three years. You guys are giving more than you're getting, simple as that. The firehouse software though, did show a weakness in your training records a couple of times, the chief was trying to get me training, which does show in the recommendations of some deficiencies, only because we haven't been able to see those. If those are corrected, then that can be changed in the recommendations.
Just one thing, Bill, we have a new training officer.
Excellent.
He just got active training, so we started to move toward that.
And if he or she needs help in firehouse, I need firehouse coordinator for- And if he or she needs help in firehouse, I'm the firehouse coordinator for our organization. And I'm also on the fire, I also serve for, I'm on the advisory council for firehouse software for upgrades and other features of the software.
We did move on that.
Good. Apparatus, again, similar. You don't have excellent apparatus, not that you don't manage it, but if we're looking, again, think back to what I said about, what is the, where are there cost savings opportunities? Given the data that I've been given so far, I don't see, I don't see, and the federal numbers, if the ISO and NFPA numbers don't match up to six engines, counting your rescue engine, you could easily get by with four and probably even, if you really, really, maybe three, but I won't recommend less. I think a chance to reduce in the future, given, again, given the data we have and the size of your municipality. Transitioning to 911, there's well over a hundred departments in this county, you and Manessin are the only ones that are still ringed down. There's a cost to that. If there's a benefit to that, that benefit needs to match that cost. It was a tough move for us too. I remember having to give up our local dispatcher about fifteen years ago to move to a county 911, and understanding that that's, well, these people don't know our streets, they don't know our people, they don't know our firefighters, the answer is yes, yes, and yes. But, you know, you have to, what I've seen so far is I have not been shown that there's an opportunity, that cost of additional equipment, that use of the on-duty manpower is worth what you're getting for. If you look in the study, there are other opportunities for on-duty manpower. What most communities do in similar situations where you have one, two, or three people on duty, is they're part of a municipal inspection program where the borough, the borough or city code allows them to do smoke detector inspections, exit sign inspections of commercial and multi-tenant properties. That ends up being A, a revenue stream, and B, gets the firefighters out in the community a little bit more, so.
Bill, let's be clear on that, because I thought Murray'sville and North Huntington have in-house 911 dispatching.
Well, I talked to the 911 manager.
And then the ring downs are the ones that were left with Manessin.
The only ones that gave me ring down, the only ones that the 911 supervisor told me were still ring downs were Manessin and here.
But I think there's a slight difference, so I'm not sure, I'm just trying to declare. I thought the North Huntington.
North Huntington has seven-digit data for the police and EMS.
So they haven't even gone on 911, they're still doing dispatching, but if somebody calls 911 in North Huntington, they'll find.
Right, they'll bring it down, but their primary source for the police in North Huntington is a seven-digit, interesting.
But the interesting thing is that even when they have a seven-digit or ten-digit number, people call 911.
Sure.
They're not going to call that number.
And that's a fire, that's a communication.
And that's the dangerous part of it.
In other words, they're potentially, obviously, anything you do is likely.
As I said, I believe, we've had excellent results in implementing programs in the borough of Swissville and Bradford, for the on-duty personnel to be involved in these type of, usually commercial occupancies and multi-tenant occupancies, because of the high turnover in those areas. It's an opportunity for twenty-five or fifty dollars per month, per inspection, to make sure there's working smoke detectors, the exit signs are lit, and there's fire extinguishers where they need to be, and municipal thugs will allow that. You don't need a firefighter to be certified as a building inspector to do code inspections. And it's a revenue stream, and we've had excellent revenue results in Bradford and Swissville with that. Accounting of funds, obviously there are issues so far in providing access to me, to more of your financials, and if you look through the study, you'll see that I've even to the point of going into tax returns and your relief audits, that money at a certain level is still available. My recommendations will always say there needs to be transparency between fire departments and volunteer departments in municipalities they serve. Doesn't have to be at a dollar and cent level, but it needs to be at a roll-up level. And explain, here's what it's taking to run the fire department. That can only help you, it can only help all of us as firefighters in the future, because at some point, and it's probably reflective of the population numbers I heard here tonight, the opportunity to continue to raise money on big bills, on fish fries, on solicitations, on carnivals, as your population shrinks and ages, that, I would bet if you looked at your revenue stream and the few tax returns I looked at, showed it's at best flat. It's not going to get better, given this population, if you've given the population, given where the money comes from. That's just a fact, it's been shown in every fire department I've looked at, that they're hitting flat revenue streams from donation raised funding. To improve that, or to at least be transparent, if you can explain to Alex and your city council and, hey, look, our donations have been dropping five percent here for the last five years, we need some help. There's nothing you can do about that other than be able to explain it the best as possible.
That's exactly why that's so important, I stress that. I talked to Chris about this, you know, put the perspective of the new engine in the cell and hoagie sales. You know, whether you give to the United Way or the Boy Scouts, you expect that money goes into programming, right? When you make a donation to the church, you want that money to go into programming. I wish we would've said, you know, didn't need to have an article that said, this pumper costs, I don't know, a million hoagies or something. You have nothing to lose by making the case for how well you use your money. There's nobody using it better. You don't have paid staff, you do it on volunteers, you do it on donations. This is totally in your favor. If you were more transparent with your money, you'll be able to say with that boot drive, or with that fundraising card, or that hoagie sales, this amount of money from this goes to that, protecting your house, to buying that equipment, to keeping the air tanks filled, to keeping people staffed. And when we see it in the nonprofit world all the time, they're doing more and more to say, every dollar you give to X organization, ninety cents goes into programming. The organizations who aren't making that case are not going to get the fundraising that they need. So this is really, you know, you say to yourself, what do we get now? Why does the city want to see our money? You know, why do we want to know what's going on? Well, it's about accountability. I mean, certainly, you know, our budgets are online, you know, certainly people have a right to pay taxes to know how we spend the money. People have a right, when they donate to the fire company, to know they're getting the best bang for the buck. You would demand nothing less as donators to organizations. So what we're just doing is trying to help you build a case for fundraising. Going on further, ten years from now, the school district is fundraising for athletic fields, for crying out loud. That's who you're competing against. How are you going to compete with them when they've got professional fundraisers, and they have these slick glossy annual reports that tell everybody how wonderful it is to donate to them? You know, and so what we want to do is, how do we go forward with transparency in the funds, so that you've made the case to the public that you're the best darn value for the dollar donated, for the hoagie bought, for the ticket sale? I mean, you know, Fabian and I talk a lot about, you know, the host company number one, and the sales that they have at the Huber Hall, and it's, it's, it's a business that you're trying to compete against for revenues, so that's, that's just my two cents on transparency.
Alex, I can tell you, as an arm and myself, when we're out selling our homes, or doing our bingo, or whatever we have, more times than not, there's people that come up and tell us that the public knows what we provide to them, that they are more than.
Sure.
Thankful for what they do, and do come up and tell us. You know, I wish, here's twenty dollars, I wish I could give you more, and I don't want to, I wish I could give you more, you guys are doing a great job. I can't tell you how many times Ryan will attest to that, a lot of times we're selling ourselves, people come and call us, and all the time. So the public does know what this fire department is putting out there, and they're telling us.
Can we do better on recording? Can we do better on recording?
I don't know, I'm just telling you, what the public's telling us, they're happy with what they're seeing and what we're seeing. They're really, I'm not hearing any negatives about.
I can agree with what he says about putting stuff in the paper, because people don't realize what the hoagies and the fire miss fair and stuff like that, what engines they're buying. They don't even know that, you know what I mean?
Two thousand dollars for a set of gear.
And the engines right now, is all bought by the fundraisers. And people don't even know that at the time, and that's, we should educate them.
So don't come on me, this is, this is a fundraiser.
Does Ryan make a plug?
Again, this is, as Alex and Debbie have said, this is a preliminary report. I assume there are copies for anyone who needs it, if you haven't seen them.
We plan on putting this report online as well, and how about?
Well, I need to send to you, I can't.
Yeah, I need a shrink and PDF, I'd like to put it online.
But as the fire chief Alex and Debbie know, really my steps from this point on are really up to them. Yes, sir?
Sir, my name's Wayne Muller, I'm president of the host company number five, and I just got a chance here tonight to look at some of your things that you've brought up under our fire protection services, and I'm just glancing through, it's a little new to me, but it said here, fire companies should provide better accounting to funds, and that's what we're talking about. Well, let me tell you something, as Fabian said, you know, each company in this town has bought a truck on their own, okay? More or less because we've had to. There's no more capital reserves left than there hasn't been. And you know, as far as the fire companies go, I think we do a damn good job of providing money for ourselves and taking care of things, okay? Maybe what you've said, I'm sure that's your recommendation as far as, you know, the better accounting firms, as far as transparency, as Alex talked about. But I'll tell you what, if you leave us alone, we can take care of ourselves, and we can take care of Latrobe, as we've been doing for a lot of years, okay? And that's, you know, I'm sure that's a lot of our opinions here that we sit, and I didn't want to interrupt you.
No, I understand your opinion. My opinion is that those dollars should always be open, because there's nothing behind.
Absolutely. But let's face it, I mean, you know, everybody's bought a truck in town, I can nail them all in the last few years. And you know, as a firefighter, as is this chief, they're sure not cheap. And everybody in this room has done it, the five companies. And I think that's a big deal to do that, you know?
Yeah, so Wayne, I agree, because the challenge will be when you're replacing them. And the thought is, if it's expensive to maintain six, at least you should ask yourself, could you get by with five? That's all we're saying.
Okay.
And I mean, that's all we're saying, you've got to look at this, just like in your house, can you afford to buy new or do you go use? And I know you guys do that, I mean, you do that with every penny, because it's that precious thing.
Right, right.
But at the end of the day, can a city that's shrinking afford as much as it used to in the past? I don't know, maybe it can't.
Well, you know, if you look at what our fire budget's, what, two-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand dollars, if I'm correct about that, I'm not sure.
It's, it's a bargain.
All right, yeah, it is, and everybody knows it. But let me go a step further here, Alex, okay? Let's say this, out of that two-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand, we have, you have two paid city employees, they're not firefighters, okay? So take another hundred thousand out of that, probably, maybe a little more, and you're looking at another hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand. So we're more of a bargain than that, okay?
Yeah, like I said, it would be one-point-two-million if I had to have a paid fire company.
Right, right.
One of the things in the charts that you'll be able to see, if you guys will get a chance to look at the reports, is comparisons to other cities. Uniontown, paid, Jeanette, paid, quasi-paid.
Right.
Connelsville, Bradford, Newcastle, other quote-unquote third-class cities that have paid or quasi, you know, kind of a mix of the two. And there's no, I mean, you guys beat them hands down all the time.
Right.
Because volunteers will always beat that.
Right.
So, yeah, I mean, what are we having to pay for? Electricity, a little bit of fuel.
Right.
A little bit of heating.
Well, I think this is the big thing, when the recommendation is to close two stations, and what these guys have put into their own stations, about any city tax dollars. I know Wayne can give you probably well over a million dollars worth of expenses that went into their building for renovations.
They just didn't have to pay.
Yeah. And there's no doubt, what the recommendations, and this is one of the reasons why I support the discussion and support the recommendations, is not a big miss otherwise. You look at three, four, and five, I'm just asking the question, what would it look like near the Legion facility if we built a new facility? I say we, I mean, everybody, I'm not saying me or you or whatever, but if that happened, would you be able to enhance revenue opportunities? Would the facilities be better for training? Could we do other things in there? I don't know, maybe, maybe we put a firing range in our, police officers get their certification by doing that there. I don't know, because I don't build these buildings. My question is, it's hard to keep old buildings up. It's hard to do what you do at three and four, I don't know how you do it. Mike showed me, and it's pretty pluggy. This is Mike's idea, this is Alex's idea, and I've seen where five is at, and I understand how it is to whip out of there and get the turn radius going. All I'm saying is, what would a building combining the two look like? And all you need to ask, is that in the best interest of the future of this city or not? And if the answer's no, then it doesn't go anywhere. If the answer's yes, then we take another step, and we talk more about feasibility, and we get serious about how do you raise the money to do that? Again, at that point, if it's not feasible, then we drop it. But I think we should at least be able to, and that's why I love what we're having this night, we've got to get you guys coming to every meeting, because I think it's important to hear and have these discussions, and not, and coming in straight from us. You know, and you'll get the report tomorrow or sometime this week, every one of you can download it, print it out, and use your ink to look at it.
Alex, can I?
And you'll see those things.
Alex, can I, excuse me. Wayne, nobody's saying you guys don't do a tremendous job and have done a tremendous job.
I know that.
For, you know, a long, long time. I think what these guys are doing, and every department is saying, let's start thinking, it's long-term, where are we going to be five years down the road, ten years down the road? You know, are there, are there some things maybe that might work better? Okay? And we've talked, and Fabian and I were just talking about it, we've talked for years about, over the years, about, does it make sense to do this, does it make sense to do that? And there may be some valid reasons to do things, and then there may be some valid reasons not to do things. But just because we're having the conversation doesn't mean it's going to happen, okay? And that we're, just because they're making a recommendation, doesn't mean we're necessarily going to agree with it. I think, as Debbie said from the beginning, you can take it or leave it, this is what we're saying, but at least it opens up the conversation to some other, some other things. But I just want to make sure everybody understands, everybody agrees with what Mike said, you guys do a great job for the community, we're very fortunate to have.
Well, that's true, I'm sure everyone and most everybody around here thinks that, but you know, when you start looking at these recommendations on paper, and you know, the city went and paid money, like, I know they got a grant, and you start thinking about what's been put down, and you start to just maybe worry a little bit about, you know, the firemen are very much involved with this city, you know, not only protect them, but you see the people on council that are, you know, Fab.
Yep.
Okay, Mike. And I, you know, the other thing that concerns me is, and I don't want to keep talking here, maybe somebody else wants to talk, but you know, the territory, you know, closing down three and four and five, you know, that's a big territory out there, okay? Now, Bill said that, you know, you're getting more, you're getting less insight for, you know, who we're working with outside. Well, I'll tell you what, you look at Brainville and Youngstown on our side of town, considering three and four and five, you know, we work a lot with those guys, okay? And they come into the city, and we go out to the city, okay? And they help us a lot. And the other thing you've got to look at a little bit is, Alex keeps talking about, down the road here, it's also a social economic value too, because I'll tell you what, those people work in Latrobe, a lot of those people live in their township, work in Latrobe, and just, same as Youngstown, okay? And if you think about that a little bit, they come into town, and you can ask Stevie Tling, who's been having fund drivers, you know, for years on the fundraising committee, okay? And you go on about it, and you look at those little pieces of paper those people send us, and they always thank us and everything, but say, for people in attorney plan, they'll say, hey, Wayne, it's, people, they'll say, hey, Brainville's common, and so are you guys, what do we do? And I says, well, if you're gonna give $20, give 10 to Brainville and give 10 to us. The whole thing makes it work, is what I'm saying.
Sure.
You know, Latrobe, five, three, and the rest of the company, and, you know, Brainville has an excellent fire department, they're small, but they're good, so does Youngstown. We worked with them guys for years, and they have excellent chiefs there. And I think you gotta take all that into consideration here, and, you know, Bill did his report here on Latrobe Fire Department, and I just don't think maybe, you know, I'm sure he did what he had to do or whatever, but I just don't think the whole picture's here, that's all I'm saying.
Well, I think he said the whole picture isn't there, because he couldn't get the, he was having trouble getting some of the information that he felt he needed.
And that kind of feedback as well, of what's going on in the other departments is...
What people want to really understand is, we are, we are incorporated as a department, but every station is incorporated on their own. I don't have access to their bank accounts. And if they don't want to divulge that information, that's up to them. And I can't blame them, because years and years, they earned that money.
There's a rule in the public, 501(c)(3) that everybody...
Well, yeah, yeah. There's two companies that didn't do it.
501(c)(3).
If they're not 501(c)(3), then they can't get grant money, right?
They can't.
Oh, yeah, they can.
They don't have...
They're just going to tax, kingdom, certain taxes.
You can't... We've got federal plans. Every company's got a...
So the, I mean, the, 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 there, the, for majority companies, they're probably...
They've got a lot of grant money. We have all new breathing apparatus. I did a federal grant, as a regional grant for the department, it was $319,000.
John, don't you think there's something inherently wrong as chief of the department, and you're unable to access the financial records of the other departments?
No, I don't, because that's the way it's been for 134 years.
Well, I understand that, but don't you think there's something inherently wrong?
Why should you know? Why should I know? What's in their bank account, I have no right to know. That's money they've earned. They were incorporated, and we were incorporated in different ways.
There's a disconnect here.
He's not a member of our company.
Why should I have access?
He is the chief of operations, not our financial...
I just think that, John, you'd said to start, that it was different. In other words, there may be another municipality where they're all part of, I don't know how this works, believe me, but they're all part of one...
I checked with Greensburg.
Well, again, how are they different?
Because they're the same way, they're incorporated on their own.
Okay. So then it's not different to other communities?
But if, let me ask a question. If, if you get any taxpayer dollars, don't you have to disclose? Isn't there a right to know? I mean, if you get any mon, if you get any money from the taxpayer, if any of those departments, are you saying the departments don't get money from the taxpayers?
It's not, it's not, it's not...
Steve, how much money do we get on the fundraiser last year?
Our goal is usually $72,000.
Right.
It's been go up and down recently, but probably $65,000.
That's not, that is not hidden anywhere. That money is...
That's not hidden?
Yes.
Well, what the companies make on their own individual bingos, that's not hidden.
And what's telling is, whether that's going up or down or flat, the cost to do business, is it less today or more today than it was 10 years ago? Equipment, the fuel, you know what I mean? And that's, that's our question as well, is, it's not getting any cheaper to do this stuff. And so, look at it this way, if you went from six to four, that might be 20% less hooky fundraiser sales you have to do.
My theory is, if it ain't broke, why fix it?
Well, you're gonna ask for a new pump or something.
You're not gonna buy it.
The taxpayers will, and your guys...
Doesn't matter how we do it, you're not paying some half.
And I agree.
That's the point I'm making.
I agree. But to get a volunteer to say, you need to do eight hours of training, you have to...
Sure, have to provide.
And here's how it works, you guys explain this to me.
I get, I get the ladder truck thrown in my face every time I turn around. That wrote the bank.
You have a sign out that says "Volunteers Wanted." The guy comes and says, well, what am I looking at? Well, I don't know how you describe that answer, but sometimes that guy walks away and says, I can't do that, I can't do the commitment of training, I can't do the commitment of fundraising. I can't, I don't understand how you touch to it. It's a lot of...
Here's what's nice, do more training, less fundraising. Well, guess what? It goes hand in hand. When you're a volunteer, that's what it's about. Bill will tell you that. Fundraising, I'm gonna tell you right now, 65% to 70% is fundraising as a firefighter. The other 30% is actual calls and training. And that's the truth. That's nationwide, if you're a volunteer. The only way to disclose that is, you pay your firefighters, because this town cannot afford, and that was thrown in my face, that this town will have 13 members as a paid fire department. Where the hell are you shitting that money? Excuse my French. Where are you going to get? And not 1.2, about 3.5 million, because you buy all the apparatus, you're gonna need two stations and at least six pieces of equipment, and you're gonna need about 24 guys, not 13.
Thanks for saving us money.
John, I just want to throw my two cents in the air. This is not negative. I wholly, wholly support the fire department, and I am, I'm, I know what you're doing, I believe in what you're doing, and I am not in favor of getting rid of any stations or any equipment.
I'm not taking this on.
I'm only one, that's only one.
Bill's a great, I really like the guy, he's knowledgeable, and it's Bill, he's making recommendations.
I know, it's a recommendation, and I don't, I don't...
You're asking these guys, for, it's 134 years of tradition, and cut in five is 1907.
I'm telling you, I'm agreeing with you.
I know, but I'm just, I'm just saying, these guys don't understand the process of just saying, hey, we're gonna do away with them, whether they're needed or not, they're paying their own way.
I know.
It's the point that's being made.
Yeah, I, I agree with you.
We're 4.4% against the budget, and I mean, if that's breaking the bank, then, you know what? It's a real sad situation.
Just a couple, not to...
I just have, well, not only environmental, but it's also city resident, actually, out of Austin City. Is anything that what you've done, equivalent, is any of that reflected in possible insurance rates going up on homeowners or anything else in that?
Um, we haven't gotten to that point. That would, that would actually require a change in your ISO rating.
And that's gonna make the, the...
So basically, you're saying... There's a possibility of...
No, the, for my recommendations, the amount of, you know, I'm, I'm in the middle of an ISO review right now, so it's real easy, I was in, I did my review last week for an upgrade, or review of our rating, we expect that we upgrade it, and said, I need to have the density of the popul, you know, just to double check, what are the population and densities for engine and ladder companies? And it's one and a half square miles per engine, two and a half, two and a half for ladder, and at a certain point, they need reserve pieces. A, a, a reduction in your number of engines would not affect your ISO rating for a city of this size and density.
Well, to Bill, and probably make you clarify some, but before there was the incorporation of the department, every company, that's why they are incorporated their own way, take care of their own work, we didn't venture in, and that's...
So you had five, you had five ratings within the city?
Yeah. And that goes back, yeah. That's why there's incorporated, yeah, one time, the, were incorporated to city board, and that's why we're together, that's...
But the change has been enormous, because one has one truck, the rest don't have. You know, whether it's the bed truck, or the air truck...
Well, we specialize, every company, every company has their own specialized piece of equipment. I mean, we do have two rescues, Rescue Five and Rescue Two, but for the most part, we have a truck at six, we have solid truck at one, we have a ventilation and hazmat truck at three. So they do specialize in their own, but like I said, again, that is money they spend on their own.
But you coordinate that. In other words, you know, one gets it, and they do that. They raise the money for it, they pay for it.
Like I said, I, I know these are recommendations, I'm just, these guys are sort of in a cloud. And, you know, if you're asking me to be able to access their bank accounts, and that's what I tried to explain to Bill, I, I don't have that. I don't have that.
And I wouldn't expect you to expect their bank accounts, but what I can expect, and when I go to any community, is I need openness in financials. I, because, as I said, bottom line, I believe there shouldn't be any, any dollars raised or spent in a fire department, should not be explained in the communities you serve. If that's a disagreement, then that's a disagreement. But that would be a recommendation, every study that I do, there shouldn't be, you know, it's a municipal service, if the cost needs to be explained, you're asking the city to pick up your insurance, you're asking the city, you're asking your city to do a fair bit for you too, they deserve, you know, they deserve, you know, it's, it's like any other cost of service. If they were, if our service was being bid out of this community, you would expect that level of, of that. If you don't agree, you don't agree, but every study I do, again, whether it's Bradford, Latrobe, Swissvale, Wilkes-Barre, Costa Mesa, California, I ask for the same information from them.
So going forward, what we'll do is, again, we'll make the reports available, and, and, you know, it's just a draft, you know, critique in Lane, we're talking about how's it work with the intergovernmental agreements in the townships, and how they deliver services.
And we absolutely want the feedback, so, once you have an opportunity to look at it, because I know when you see it as a bullet point on the screen, it seems a little abrupt, but there's a lot of reasoning and a lot of explanation and a lot of rationale behind where these recommendations are in front. So we want by you to look at the website, get the report, you know, download what you want, what you need, what you're interested in, and we're, we're more than, you know, willing to come back and have another discussion, or help you continue the discussion, or, again, you know, if it's the end of the discussion, as Mary said, then it's the end of the discussion.
And Alex and Chief have, might, have, know how to get in touch with me.
I want to thank everybody. Sorry. I just want to thank everybody for coming, that's nice to see you there. I appreciate what you do.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, let's move on, um, Alex. And this, um, section of our report, we kind of are gonna have Dave and Michelle both sort of take over this part of the report. The public works and the transfer station are so intrinsically connected in terms of how they operate, and how the manpower is utilized, how the resources are distributed, the revenue that's collected, it's very, very closely connected. So, as I said before, Michelle Nestor, who specializes in the issues of solid waste and sanitation and transfers, and I don't know how to do it, because it's very complex, and Dave Sabosley, who has done a number of these public works, please, I'm gonna ask you two to decide how you want to do this, and, and talk about part of the operator, I'm saying, one of the ones.
Good evening, as Debbie said, my name is Dave Sabosley.
Commit this.
Apologize for my lateness tonight, I think John and I are in the same traffic backup on Route 22.
Cut me off.
But, you know, it was...
You might want to go to the next slide, then?
No, we have to repeat here. Sort of segueing from, you know, the delivery of service, you know, we, you hear about the delivery of service for the fire department. When you think of public works, usually your residents think of two things for, for public works, you know, snow plowing and removal of your garbage. How are those things done? Those are the two, two big issues. I, my study here dealt with probably three or four meetings with Joe Bush. Appreciate Joe, your time that you took with me to, to walk you through your operations. We drove around for a day or so, looking at everything that his department does, and we're gonna, if you look at the report in step four, there's a, a good report on, on public works. But we reviewed public works, and, and as Debbie said, we retained Michelle Nestor to look at the transfer station. Of all the EIPs we've done, this is the first, uh, community that we've come across with the transfer station. It is such a specialty item that we felt that we need someone who works in that field all the time to, to analyze that for us. Organizationally, for public works, I apologize if I'm in the way there, Joe's department is made up of, you know, we look at nine or 10 people, but they're all separated by functions. We have dedicated mechanics, we have people dedicated to roll-off service, dedicated to meters, then we have people dedicated to public works function. And when you look at everything that happens, I mean, besides garbage removal and snow plowing, we try to look at all the functions that were out there to see what the department was doing, what the department wasn't doing. And just bear with me, go down through the list here. We look at everything that Joe does with his diverse work group, maintains city hall, maintains 300 storm inlets, maintains an area of 2.3 square miles, maintains approximately 50 pieces of equipment citywide for police, public works, et cetera, maintains culverts and drainage facilities, maintains work zone controlled traffic during projects, does one calls, maintains over 1,200 parking meters, meter logs, potholes, plowing roads, looking at driveway permits, looking at road signs. There's a whole lot that goes on there.
I forgot to mention 4,000 street signs.
Uh, well, I think...
We said 4,010 after the Jake break. Jake break.
Yeah, I didn't get to the street sign issue, and I, I will say that Latrobe probably has the best way of tracking signs. A little bit antiquated, still doing pencil and, and paper, but they have a system, a card catalog system, that maintains or lists every street sign, the distance from the corner, the maintenance on the signs, when they've been replaced, do a great job on that. You don't see a whole lot of places that, that try to track that information. So he's working on all these public works issues with two or three people who are dedicated to public works. And then as you go through the report, and you look at the budgets, and the budget shows that the majority of the public works budget money is spent not on the public works issues, but on the issues related to solid waste in the transfer station. You can go through, you can look at tables, we provided, but I'm gonna let Michelle come up and talk about the transfer station, her analysis of the transfer station, recommendations for the transfer station, then I'm gonna come back in the backend and make some recommendations for public works.
Well, I will say, this is probably the biggest bait-and-switched project I've ever been invited into, because I thought I was here to take a quick look at the transfer station, and somehow I got sucked into this massive vortex of your residential collection contract for the past six months or so. So, I feel like I know the council pretty well now, and, and the staff. The first thing we did when we came to look at the transfer station is much the same as, as the other consultants have said, you look at a municipality services, and what are their core services and the purpose of them. You know, I also would do the same thing if I was looking at this transfer station from the private sector. You know, why do you need one? So the first thing you look at in a municipality is, most municipalities that would have a transfer station probably do their own waste collection, and therefore, they need a transfer station to consolidate the loads from small trucks and take them to a remote landfill to save money. Okay? Check off the list, we don't do that here. The second reason towns have a transfer station is that there's no curbside collection, so people don't have a, these are really rural areas, people don't have enough mechanism to get rid of their waste. That's not a problem here. We have curbside collection of waste and recycling. In fact, our residents pay a premium price for those services in Latrobe. So then we looked at another collection service that you have, you have roll-off collection service, in fact, you have a monopoly on the, the roll-off collection service, because there's an ordinance that says, nobody else can come into this town and offer that service to the residents. So, we looked at, is the transfer station support the consolidation of loads from the roll-off service? And the reality is, very few loads that are collected go through the transfer, because the container that's there isn't much bigger than the roll-offs that we have on the street. So we kind of have three reasons I would really look at having a transfer station that show that it's not actually a necessary service. One thing you've heard over and over and over again tonight, is that the transfer station is a revenue generator. So, in my analysis, it kind of boiled down to that. If there aren't these other functions that we need, then maybe that's why you have it. So we took a lot of look from, you know, way up 30,000 feet, and is this thing a money-maker? And the year I came on is right after the storm came through. Excuse me. So, yes, we had a spike in revenue, but nobody can analyze a budget based on one year. So I took a look at multiple years of the transfer station's operation, and come to find out that this is truly a spike. Historically, if you look back at 2010, which was the other year that we took a look to compare to 2011, 2010's representative of historic trends. And when you look at waste and how it operates, you look at some key indicators. The first is, are you in a growth area? Is your population growing? Are you building new homes? Because people make garbage, it doesn't just appear. So here we are, we're in a declining population, we're kind of landlocked, we don't have a lot of new construction. Too bad indicators to say that that revenue from 2011 is gonna continue. It was a catastrophic event, yes, it helped, it was here, but you can't manage to the exception. You have to manage to the norm, that's what contingents and plans are for. So if I looked at the transfer station, I would not bank on 2011. In fact, that's why insurance companies make money, because they bet the catastrophic events aren't gonna happen often. And I think a lot of the focus on the transfer station was that that's how the money-maker, that was the money-maker. When we looked at the other years, we came to find out that the transfer station as a revenue generator barely breaks even. In an average year, we did see $30,000 profit. However, one of the things the city does not do is have a sinking fund for equipment replacement. So we're looking at, you know, much the same as the fire departments are, we're looking at big pieces of equipment, probably $300,000 easily in trucks, and that was a couple years ago. I just priced a couple roll-offs the other night, they're a little more than that. You have scales that will need replace, you have a compactor that needs replace. Bottom line is, if I were to look at your budget, I would probably add another $46,000 to $50,000 to start building up a fund for replacement and repair at the transfer station. Even if we did that today, we couldn't play catch-up fast enough to replace the two trucks that you're gonna need really fast. And that $46,000, I didn't even include all the equipment, just what I thought you would need on a rolling basis. So, we looked at some other options then with the transfer station, and, and it kind of mirrors one of the trends you've heard from police and from fire, is that if you that if you don't need a transfer station for your own residence because you have residential collection, you don't need a transfer station because you don't really consolidate that many loads, who do you need this transfer station for? Well, it boils down to that the people around your town probably benefit more from it than your own residents do. Because they don't have to have garbage collection. So they can bring their waste to the transfer station. The question then is, are we charging enough? We looked at some of the numbers, we know what your costs are now, we were able to compare those costs finally to an independent bid. And the reason that helped me look at the transfer station was, as Dave said, the public works and sanitation department are so interwoven that it's difficult to find out what are the true cause of labor, fuel, maintenance in each one of those segments. They're like this, they overlap. So the only way we can look at the cost is how you allocate them. So, and the reason we do that is, I looked at the labor as a day rate. You have this individual, they're allocated to the sanitation department, I don't care how they're shifted. So that's how we compared the cost of sanitation to the bids we receive. Now, I understand there's problems at the end with these bids, but nevertheless, it gives the council food for thought. Here's somebody saying that these costs can be done a little lower and I think that's a first step for you to go back and say, how are we managing our resources? Are we using them to benefit the city? Are we using these resources to benefit the towns around us? And when Dave finishes with public works, you know, I would counter that some of how we dedicate our resources to sanitation might be better used for another purpose.
Yeah, I mean, and just so that everybody here knows, if you read again the full report, Michelle does discuss three different options in pretty great detail, benefits and drawbacks on each of those options, I mean, you've seen it. One of the things that when we talk about prioritizing or what's next is the development of a business plan and that's, I know you may be pretty far down the road on that, I get that, but we had worked with you to pull a scope together, we should probably talk to Michael about their new funding round, but this is such an important part of the city operation that it seems to us that, you know, a business plan is absolutely-
Joe and I had an opportunity to go to really our own, I mean, only other counterpart was Sunbury, Pennsylvania. We saw municipal operation there, it was run by a municipal authority who was in everything from sewage and water to waste, solid waste. And what we were impressed with was, they were very similar in size to us, the tonnage, the halls, it was like looking at our mirror image in a bid. But they were a couple years ahead of us and I think they got a quarter million dollar grant, Joe, in one of the last Act 101. And the reason they were able to do that, and it was the change, how the boxes and the layout of recycling happens there, they did that through the plan that obviously cost a good bit of money. So Mike, we're definitely gotta have a conversation about implementation related to that business plan concept because we burned Michelle's bill of hours in probably September of last year and we've been trying to figure out how to move forward, though we keep on asking for more analysis as we move forward. But Sunbury was interesting because it was fun, Joe, watching how they envisioned their change. And I don't know what the total cost is at the end of the day, but it's probably a quarter million, but they were doing a lot to better position themselves for the customers. Because if we are servicing the area, maybe there's a way to see it as like a commuter tax. A lot of times cities will overcharge parking and other things because they can't dip into the commuter's income. But if unity township folks will be gladly paid to throw their garbage away here and we can make a profit on it, we'll gladly take the profit and do it.
And a lot of fees are structured that way so that non-residents pay more for whatever service they do.
What we don't want to do is a city resident subsidizing, conveniencing dairy and unity township people. Mr. Paul, you've been up to the facility, you know what I'm talking about. We don't want to be at a point where the city residents are underwriting, in fact, to Dave's point, they've said it well, but it couldn't even be said better, Joe's staff are all specialized but yet all cross-trained. Literally, you have a mechanic make a drive or a guy who's, you know, a driver doing other services within the city. And what's hidden in that is that the union has agreed to really one job classification, which is interesting because a lot of unions would say, hey, you're just a pipe fitter, you're just a welder, you're just a machinist, and that's it. Our public works guys are all one thing. And so, so that a mechanic can't tell Joe, hey, I'm a mechanic, you can't ask me to do that, that's not in the agreement. He can tell him to do that, and believe me, like today's like today where we have vacations and a guy who got hurt and a guy this, those mechanics sometimes find themselves out or vice versa, I mean, there's other kinds of cross-training that has happened. Very good utilization of staff, but that happens because what necessitates the mother invention and Joe's had to make do with decreasing resources and staff in the empire.
And Michelle, you spent a lot of time up with Joe at the transfer station, put all this together.
Well, what I was asked to do first, this is a two-phase thing, and I've been asked that question a lot. I had visited the transfer station quite a while back.
How far back?
About a year and a half ago. I was here with Ellen Keat. But, there are certain basic principles in our industry. And it would be like the chief operating officer of Walmart. If he had in front of him a set of numbers from every store, they would paint a picture for him because there's certain things you're looking for. And that's how I looked at the numbers here to say, you know, how many tons are we collecting? How is the equipment utilized? If there was anything really strange that jumped out, it would have warranted an intensive visit with Joe. It wasn't anything strange, it was pretty straightforward, it was a pretty straightforward business.
So, to be honest with you, Joe, from a facility standpoint, and I'm not, this isn't a critique of Joe and how it works, it's an inherited resource. I would, if I was building one of these, after looking at a couple of them now and trying to learn it, I would never build one the way we built it. The scales are, the scale operator shouldn't have top of those scales. But unfortunately, sometimes cars are going in between, sometimes people drive away without paying. And we lose, but now we got cameras, Joe, we're catching them. And we don't have eyes all the time on the dump sites. You would never set up a transfer station the way we've kind of, you know, inherited it, I think is the best word. I mean, if we were to lay it out differently, if you gave us three acres and set a layout transfer station, you'd have a lot tighter operation and there would be more eyes visible. To compensate, we just recently installed $15,000 worth of cameras-
Bring something up like that, we hear something like a business plan.
Yeah, exactly. And when we scoped it out, we actually did include a piece that was related to, like a landscape architect where it was on Keat's in scope, so that it wasn't just a business plan, that someone did actually look at the site and did some site review of the site.
But back to your question, Mike, there's no doubt, I know Michelle probably heard this, maybe from me, if not, you'll hear it again tonight, the staff wanted more time, Michelle, onsite. Now, we milked the bill of hours out of that segment within the contract to about 200% of what was in there. So the point is, yeah, a site visit probably would have gone a long way, at least winning the confidence of staff and the trust of staff, but on the other hand, there's only so many bill of hours in any contract to get it done. And so, we compromised site visits, if you will, or didn't have that in lieu of getting much more work done, you know-
Well, and actually, as Michelle said, the solid waste contract sort of delayed a lot of that and made up a lot of that-
We've been twice.
Yeah, because Michelle assisted with that. That wasn't a new step, but we included it anyway.
Well, no, Michelle, at first when you started up there, you was asking a lot of numbers and it took a long time to get them all better, Mike.
Right.
And but part of it is that the point where we did cost allocation, maybe, in other words, what you said was telling, or maybe Debbie said it, that we were just allocating costs. Joe can tell you how much money is spent within the public works budget on repairs, maintenance, and on sanitation. But that's over years of cost allocation. Is it reflective of actual pickup and deliveries, time chart, time studies, we've had this discussion, right? Is it an actual time study that's dictating that or is it just kind of past practice and keep allocating? And that's what made it hard for the consultants, when we give them numbers, they weren't including all the time benefits, for example. We keep the benefits elsewhere, so we have to do things to get those back. I did give all the numbers you need.
We tried to look at the transfer station the way I would if I was running it as my business. But the problem is, if we took just these hours that so-and-so drives from point A to point B and we start running them like that, it gives somewhat of a false impression because we would also have to do exactly the same thing on the public works side of things because these hours overlap. And you can't just do half of that analysis without doing it in detail on the other side, which is why all we really were trying to do at first was to see in a very simplistic fashion, does it make money?
A larger question, this is a policy question for council and Joe and I wrestle with this. When you maintain a transfer station permit under the DEP regulations, you must do X, Y, Z. So Joe daily has to make decisions that really make that the priority on manpower disposition. He can't let the waste sit there over a certain amount of time. So what happens is, unfortunately in our town, from time to time, it's the dog, it's a part of the dog that gets the most attention. And so we might have this issue with the drainage, we might have that issue, we got a storm coming up and somebody says, hey, mind your claws, we gotta look at it. Well, Joe's got a guy running that box to the landfill, if he doesn't do that, he may be in violation of his permit. So the permit gets the attention at times over other things because we've gotta meet that demand and sometimes we delay and defer other public works efforts in favor of meeting the obligation of servicing the area and running a great transfer or keeping the transfer station in permanent compliance. Does that make sense, Joe?
What makes you think permits exist? A 24-hour service, I mean, 24 hours, they can move that garbage within 24 hours.
We're not the store owner.
No, no, I mean, you just, after a while you need a rhythm, I think, you need a better-
But the point is, it demands attention that you just can't say for a week, we're not gonna do this for a while because we gotta get this paving job done or X-line job done, we just can't do that.
And where it really hurts is, we heard about injuries, vacations, that you have a depleted manpower to draw from during the summer hours, the summertime, but yes, that stuff must be moved from the, so the station over to the landfill. That takes a priority and the rest of your public works functions will suffer because of that. And just, I guess, to move on if we're, if we're done with that, we talked about, I was gonna go through and talk about some things that the department doesn't get to do, and I'm not gonna skip over that, it's in the report. One of the critical issues in there, and we heard Bill talk about it tonight, I think you see it all throughout your budget, the lack of budgeting for training issues. There needs to be training, there needs to be ongoing safety training for that department. Critical thing that you wanna look at in your next budget, but we go and we look at the, at the recommendations here. Yeah, here we go. Paving of your streets, right now you're depending for the most part on CDVG funds that you get once every three years for paving issues. Eventually, without a long-term plan in place, you're gonna get behind the gate ball like you are with some of your vehicles and equipment at the transfer stations. So we make a recommendation that you put some sort of long-term paving management plan in place. Number two, you really can't do, I mean, let's still tow your streets when you pave them new, that'll make your streets last a little bit longer. We heard Michelle talk about replacement schedule and maintenance of vehicles. We have over 50 vehicles, not all Joe's, but we see that citywide, they could make a replacement schedule for those. Routine repair and replacement of catch basins. There's no doubt that that's something that public works needs to do more of. When there's a problem, they certainly address it, but they'd like to be a little more proactive to save them some time down the line. There's a recommendation about shade tree, shade tree commission for trees. You have a great asset in your public works department, the street sweeper. That street sweeper sits in your public works garage idle a lot of the times.
It's just not manpower good.
Yes. I mean, a great PR for your residents to see that street sweeper coming down the street. And Joe does a great job, his streets are meticulously cleaned. But that street sweeper could go out in your commercial district once or twice a summer in the residential district to help with making the streets a little bit cleaner. Other things that seem to suffer, just don't have the manpower to get to, some curb repair, line markings, facilities upkeep, those are just things that are missed because of manpower issues. They're basic public works functions, but they just don't seem to get done just because of the priority that you have at your transfer station. So that's about it for public works, please read the report, there are a lot more recommendations in there, give me questions, we'd be happy to provide answers. Alex, this is how to get hold of us and be happy to talk to you about that.
You can go on anything.
Okay. Dave, you can get my car back.
Yeah.
I'll sort of fly through this sort of here in one second. Review of your community development codes and zoning. One thing that we have to try and keep in mind, what is the difference between zoning, code enforcement, and building? Certainly, you have now a full-time person, I don't know if Anne's here tonight, that had been part-time for a good number of years, 16, 17 years.
Well, she was about five years part-time, she was hired about 17 years ago.
Yes, a full-time person there. But she is the only person there that is addressing a whole lot of issues. Just give me one second to get up here.
Oh, you're down to slide 21. That last, 22, to be sure, that particular position has been paid without any tax dollar support. It's amazing that you can, what you can do, find your grant money.
And that's why we called it out separately because it's such a great opportunity and it so fits the, you know, modern thinking and planning and communities are really, you know, trying so hard to be involved in those sustainability issues and hardly ever have that. So you're to be commended for having that position, for continuing to find grant money to support it and for recognizing how important that position is.
You know, when you look at the cost benefit of that, certainly, the person in that position provides the additional outreach to the community. I mean, now, because he assists you, he works with Anne, he provides additional services that you normally don't see and can't get to on a regular basis. And if you look at the grants that he's worked on and helping in, certainly a great addition to the administration. But real quick in planning and development, as I said, I talked with Anne, who handles code enforcement, she handles zoning, she handles planning. The city has a third, third-party building inspection agency, which in today's day and age is a very good move due to the certifications that are needed for plan review, et cetera, et cetera. So she doesn't handle that, but she seems to concentrate more on the code enforcement, zoning, things like that. As you read through the report, look at the certain things that she does, code enforcement was one of them. We looked at your zoning ordinance, we looked at your subdivision land development ordinance. One of the recommendations you see here is that that subdivision of land development ordinance needs to be updated. It was adopted back in 1996 and as a rule of thumb, usually in the 10 years you'll be looking at the update of that. I know your zoning ordinance is within the last 10 years, but the sound is definitely needs updating. As far as code enforcement, once again, she's one person in that department doing inspections. She needs to try and take, it's a manpower issue, a more proactive approach on those issues. You may wanna look at some part-timers who might be able to help her out, but right now she seems to be reacting to the calls she gets. The use of the software, the software is used, I think, from a management standpoint, you might appreciate her updating that a little quicker so that you can get those reports and if you get a phone call from the public, you know what's going on. But as Debbie said, that software right now is based solely in her department. We need to look from an IT standpoint at how we can expand that use so that you can use it, so that Joe can use it, and the whole staff citywide, including the police department, at least look at that software and then gather some good information. Another recommendation here, property maintenance in single-family residential code. Right now, Anne is enforcing a housing code that was written in 1981 and has not been updated. I would not try and reinvent the wheel on the housing code, we have all these codes out there today. I think that if you look at some of the UCC codes, certainly you could find something that's a little more up to date. We already talked about the sustainability coordinator position. We thought that, or we do think that he's doing an excellent job and has a great position to help out-
One thing on the, expanding the occupancy program that, I think that this overlaps with what Bill was saying in terms of training the firefighters to do additional code inspections. Because, was it the commercial that, I think, not all the commercial-
Yeah, in the commercial district, when there's a change of use in the commercial district, there is no inspection required, no occupancy permit required there, which really concerned me. But you do a lot of rental registrations- really concerned me. But you do a lot of rental registration, safety inspections, that Ann certainly can't get to all of them. And then certainly, if there was someone in the fire department, if the drivers were trained to provide that service, certainly they could help her get through those in a more timely fashion.
As you transition to the technology one day, the next slide. A lot of these, we've kind of got out on the technology side.
Yes.
I was going to, I was going to mention that when I heard you the other, a few slides back. You've pretty much addressed a lot of this. Go forward.
Just basically, we have, especially we've done step one, step two is in the process, right? We've got a request out for that. Step three is done except for the key system, firehouse, we just talked about that with Chief Vazilli, and then some of the disaster recovery policies. We invested in a new server by default. Ours basically was crashing and so we spent about $15,000 in a state-of-the-art server system, and all the rest of them have been addressed. Electronic key system, we need a grant for that, it's just too expensive to convert the locks to that. Joe, when we looked at that, it was a pretty pricey thing. But we do know, for accreditation, we've got to find a way to tighten up the envelope.
Yeah, my concern was with bringing on the booking.
Yeah, essential booking.
Yeah, there are going to be so many people in and out of here that you want to know who's coming in and out of here. And I have to see.
Believe me, both sides of the staff, one path.
Right.
We're not being excited by administration being able to be accessed by potential felons.
But it's a retrofit of all the doors and hardware too, I believe.
Yeah, that's why we need things.
Yeah, and one of the things I've seen recently, a lot of them dealt with hardwired systems. They have wireless ones now that may be a little more cost-effective. But as far as, you talked about the upgrade in the police, there's also, as Debbie said, an upgrade needed for your finance. You upgraded a server, there was a 2003 server. For your finance, you're looking at a 2000 server, that's even older. So you're going to go through that same transition, probably not as costly as with the alert product, but certainly something that is going to need to happen.
We did fill out a preliminary request for a phase two funding related to the software packages we need. And hopefully, Mike, if you've got any money before Jan. 30th, we'll be glad to take it.
You mean next week?
Yeah.
Thinking a new match of markers, unheard.
When you look at the report, the report goes into detail about certain software packages, hardware, et cetera. But the thing to look at is you have five or six different things going on at one time. And really, there's no one appointed to, I mean, by default, Alex is the coordinator, financial software, police software, fire software, email, web, backups, disaster recovery. I mean, that's a full-time job that you're handling by default. You've got all these different forces that are coming together. So you need to look at that. And I think you need to look at maybe a little more clearly defining in your budget.
IT expenditures.
IT expenditures. So you, I mean, it's tough to tell where the money is being spent. You need to get, just as with your vehicles, you need to get into some sort of system where you're replacing year by year. Computers can come out daily within two or three years. You need to get into that. And I know that the police just recently upgraded a lot of theirs. They had to, I guess, for the alert product. But certainly, you've got a lot going on, a lot more than we see in other municipalities. We just need to try and control that and address some of those issues from the report. So.
Which is a good segue to, I'm a firm laborer and anything ever too hard is totally not productive. So I'm going to wrap this up and get to go. We do have, as I said, steps, the bottom six to talk about, but I won't, I won't make you stay and talk about it tonight. What I would suggest though is, when we, if we could have maybe a session with the council members, just like a very short sort of strategic session, just primarily to prioritize the goals. We would suggest to you, and this is what I'm going to leave you with, that these are probably the goals and these are broad goals to think about that we would highly recommend, that we focus on. Goal one would be a solid self-sustaining revenue base. Goal two, a cost containment strategy for operations. And this is going to include the business plan for the transfer station. Actually, that's, you know, partly one and partly two because there's an expense and revenue side to that. Sustainability, safe, clean, a sustainable community, and talk a little bit about code enforcement and some of the higher priority things that are in the plan. Technology, and actually, what I'm going to say through, I'm going to go through the book like here. Goal one, we talked about the more diverse revenue stream and looking at some of the things that we can do related to revenue on the expense side. We talked about most of those things, but I did want to include the financial management. Software is a top priority. I do think it's really important to get better reporting, better information, easier access in a more modern way.
You have to remember that your current program is running on a DOS system that is 30 years old.
Really is.
And it crashes your trouble.
Yeah. And it's the hardest, you know, I'm a budget finance person, I teach it everywhere. It's the hardest in the organization. I mean, that is what it's about. That's why we do that first, to set the context for everything else that happens in the municipality. Developing the business plans of the transfer station, again, we think these are the most important priorities for you. Knowing your situation, these are those things that we think you ought to think about. A little bit of stuff with police accreditation, continuation, keeping a sustainability position, looking at your land use regulations of your plan. You know how pertinent it is to have these things in place because the minute someone comes in, he's a developer, somebody who wants to do something in your town, you want to have those regulations in place to make sure it's the development you want to see happen in code enforcement. And then the technology we talked about, you've done a good bit of it, you probably need to do a little bit more. There's a big demand for e-government processes on top of the internal enterprise system. You've got this big demand for the interface from your residents and the e-government stuff. And then this sort of sums it all up. How are you going to pay for this stuff? And the way you start to learn how to pay, if you're going to pay for it, is to put it all in a capital plan. So once you've identified it all, we think that the goal number five should be really pulling together a comprehensive CIP that includes all that stuff, including the vehicles and the facilities and the, whatever you're going to do at the transfer station and your technology and all of that stuff. So those are the goals that we've identified. You may have other ones that you think come out of the plan that are more important. That's what we want to talk to you about at some point. And then, like I said, six, we really, really recommend sort of an implementation process. When you assign somebody as the implementation manager, somebody has to be in charge of going through the plan and making sure that you have a schedule that is keeping the council informed as to how you're doing on the plan, that you're monitoring your progress, that you have sessions where you may even appoint an implementation committee that says, okay, this is our job. Our job is to look at this plan, make sure that we're the manager and council, and prioritize that, and find a way to build the capacity to get some of this stuff done. Some of it's through volunteer recruitment, some of it's through identifying resources and investments, and then of course, funding it. A good start is to work with DCD to see what can be funded. There's a whole bunch of other programs out there and you mix and match. Once you have your projects, we do funding matrices all the time where we list all the projects and we list all the potential programs and we see where they meet and when you can get just a pair of funding applications. And building community applicable support for your project. So that's the 25-second version of the last two steps that we want to talk to you about. The next steps are, we're going to deliver to you the bottom six, which are the implementation priorities. A meeting with Mike, the DCD, and was asked if there's any follow-up that we can provide for you. We want to stay engaged with you, we want to help you. We didn't do all this work to not have it implemented. So we're hoping that at least a few of the things in there you think are important and that you will be, continue to work with us to provide scopes and try and get some funding for you and identify additional resources. And I will close with that. I do want to thank everyone. Everyone has been great here. We've had an excellent working, our relationship with the staff, and everybody's been totally cooperative. And thank you.
Thank you.
Some of these recommendations you wrote before, that we haven't linked to our other place, we've already, we've already acted on some of them.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we are.
I know you have.
Very much. And I think it's interesting that we had, fortuitously, Mike McKay and the guy talked about the million dollars. I want, hopefully, the elected officials really to consider how we do what we do with that one million. Because when that comes in, if we have a business plan for the transfer station, if we have a need related to other capital needs at this building and other buildings that we have, or with the fire companies or police or public works, how are we going to pay for it? And you have, you have an opportunity before you that worked out that a million dollars may be able to be made available to you to finance those elaborate grants to get those things done. So, you know, it goes back to that Mike McKay discussion. What are you going to do with that money? Do you want to, you want to just, you know, we will reduce parking obligations, but do you want to add to the taxpayers additional obligation of debt with the long-term goal of getting 17 other things off your plate and accomplished? And again, I'll advocate for the latter, but certainly, you're the policymakers and the elected officials have to make that final decision. The good news is, we've got lots of time between now and when the check comes and when this report gets done, but they're very intertwined, at least I would think, that you consider that as intertwined in your decision-making. With that, I'm done with my stuff, you've got my management report. For those of you guys who stuck it out, I appreciate it. And hopefully, you saw the bigger picture of how this is fitting into the discussion and it will stimulate more questions and more observations. Mr. Bullock, as always, maybe we'll point you to the committee for the finance implementation of it and you can give some help.
And I want to just mention my team here. I think I have the best team around and they worked really hard on all of this information here. I want to thank them.
Thank you.
I forgot you. Thank you.
Good night.